Good afternoon. All right, good afternoon. All right, all right. I know we just had lunch and a little bit of networking, but I promise you, we're gonna keep this interesting and exciting as we go. First of all, my name is Lisa Robinson and I am the Vice President of Food Safety and Public Health for Global for Ecolab. I've been with the company for, gosh, five and a half years, but I have been in the food, beverage, and retail business for 30 years. And so, and I have had the opportunity to not only work in plants and do auditing, but just a ton of different roles and responsibilities that I have played in the business. And I will tell you that early in my career, I had the opportunity to spend some time with our teams that were working on customer complaints. And we would see what the compliments were, but we would also see what the complaints were. And I think seeing that early in my career really helped me to really understand that every product that we make is going to a person. And that person has a name and that person has a family. And I think that was a big component that really helped drive my passion in food safety. And I'm hoping that as we kind of talk through some of the topics today, that you'll also see that we want to do a call to action, like what are some of the things that we can do? Now, before I bring up our panelists, I do want to kind of tee up the conversation with just a little bit of information. I'm a data nerd. Most people who know me know that I love getting into the numbers and really understanding what they say and really trying to interpret that. And so, I want to show you some of the numbers and some of the research that we've done just to kind of help prepare for this session today. Okay. Okay. So, we've heard this even this morning. I was very pleased to see that the topic that we're talking about is really relevant. And when you see, when you think about the consumer, these are the headlines, like what's making the headlines? I remember in talking to our CEO Christoph, he asked me in the middle of last year, he's like, "Are the wheels falling off the bus in food safety?" And I said, "Well, I see what you see." And this is what the consumer sees, right? All of these things that are in the headlines, but what my job is to do is to kind of learn from them and figure out what are the next steps that we need to follow up with. And I believe these slides are going to be available too, so I want to make sure of that. Okay. So, let's get into some numbers, the actual data and the people that are impacted. You probably have seen the World Health Organization data before, but we know that they are keeping track of kind of the foodborne disease burden around the world. They say, the big thing I would take away from this slide is one in 10 people become ill with, from their data, become ill with the foodborne illness. In reality, it's probably more than that mainly because a lot of illnesses don't get documented. And there are a lot of countries that, especially developing countries, that may not be reporting this information. The second thing that I want to, as you get kind of a more granular into the information, I started to look at where can I look at food and beverage recalls, events, and actions around the world? So, looking at North America, which includes Canada and the US, looking at that data, the number one reason for recalls were microbial related, right? We typically see, when we look at just FDA stuff, we see that it's mainly allergens, but when you take into account the USDA and you take into account Canada, the main issue is microbial issue. So, as we start to think about how can we address things, where do we start? And maybe that's a place. The second place I looked up was from a European Union perspective, kind of the rapid analysis report or rapid alert reports. The biggest issue in the EU is not necessarily micro, it's more chemical related. So, are there issues that we need to address? Because the issue in particular here, the number one issue, I believe, was chloropyrophos, a pesticide that does impact human health. And so, when you look at that, is that something that we may want to address, right? And then I looked at their microbial issues and their number one issue for micro recalls or events were for Salmonella. Then, and so, when I think about all the questions that people kept asking me, you saw some slides earlier today, big events happened, unfortunate events and outbreaks that had happened that really came into light for a lot of people. And it made you think, is the food supply less safe today than it is? So, when you dig deeper into the recall data just from the US, when I looked at the FDA data, the last five years of recalls have been pretty stagnant, right? It's not like last year, everything shot right up. It's really pretty stagnant. So, we still, it's better than it has been in the past, but there's still an opportunity. The second part of this graph is outbreaks. Outbreaks are related to the number of people in cases of people that became ill. And that trend over the last few years is actually going down. So, you think, wow, maybe the food supply is safer, but it's not zero. Now, I know we don't expect it to always be zero, but what that tells me is that there's opportunities for us. So, as I was thinking through what we would talk about today, I said, okay, what should, where should we kind of drive? If we're gonna ask the industry or ask stakeholders for a call to action, where do we want to drive that attention? And I said, you know, let's just talk about listeria. So, why listeria? I could have picked Salmonella, we could have picked a pesticide, we could have picked E. coli, but I picked this for a couple of reasons. One, and I'll show you in a couple more slides, when you look at the data, hospitalization, the hospitalization rate is high as well as the mortality rate. Now, the cases may be low, but the impact is much greater. Second piece of that is listeria is a transient pathogen and it can indicate insanitary conditions. And so, being from Ecolab, I want to know what's these conditions that potentially that we can help the industry with in terms of being able to address? And then the last piece is, you know, I talked to our pest elimination folks and they gave me some really great data on the fact that, you know, a lot of times we think about flies and we're just swatting them out of the way. Well, the 8% of the body of a fly could be carrying a pathogen. It could be carrying Cronobacter, but third, it could be also carrying listeria. So, I thought, okay, maybe there's a little bit of a theme. So then, let me look at the actual, go deeper into the recalls for the US. And once I looked at the FDA and USDA recalls, the number one issue on the microbial side was listeria. So, you think about what we saw in the headlines and what you see in the data, you start to put all that together, maybe we should focus on that. Can't just look at what's happening in the US. We're a global company, we're in 170 countries. So, I want to be able to look out as far as we possibly can. So, in looking at the EU data, we saw that listeriosis cases rose from 2019 to 2023 to the highest level since they started surveilling this as a pathogen. And the second piece to it is there were some rules that are now being amended in the EU because of it. And then the last piece is the aging population, right? So, we know that if you're immunocompromised or if you're in certain populations, you're going to be much more impacted by this as a pathogen. So, when you start to look at this data, okay, we see what's happening in the US, we see what's happening in the EU. Let's take a look at one more place. So, looking at the UK, really looking at not just only here, one in four people suffer from an episode, but when you look at hospitalization was nearly 100% of the time. So, when you start to look at how hospitalizations impact the industry and impact those people, you start to see the seriousness of it. And then the last couple of pieces, I'll just say from a consumer trust perspective, you know, how do you link this back? Well, when you look at consumer trust from a Gallup survey that was done in the US, it's down 9% since 2019. And you could see some of the reasons for that is that people just don't trust what they're actually getting. And then in the EU, looking at kind of the food consumer observatory trust report, we're seeing that at around 50%, manufacturers, retailers, and other food authorities, the trust level is at around 50% for all of them, right? So, when you start to see that, like what is happening with trust and the connection to potentially the issues that we're seeing on the food safety side, there's definitely some connective tissue there. So, from a call to action perspective, why did I pick it? Why did we, you know, decide to discuss it? It can be transient, indicate insanitary conditions, hospitalization and mortality rates are high, and it's, you know, prevention and control is the key. So, with that, our panelists that I will bring up are Melanie Newman from the, from food industry attorney and executive coach, Newman Advisory Services. She's invested over 25 years in providing the food, oh, come on up.
Here, we're ready to go.
We invited ourselves.
I see that. I was gonna give you like a hand clap and everything, but by all means.
We'll take a hand clap.
Sit down, yes. I do want to tell you a little bit about them. You know, Melanie, I just really enjoy our conversations, but she's invested over 25 years in providing the food industry with actionable and practical legal compliance and enterprise risk management solutions to just help companies de-risk their food safety related exposure. And she advises companies across the supply chain to help respond to outbreaks, recalls, inspection findings, enforcement actions, and complaint management. And then Joe Meyer, Global Microbiology Lead for KERY. Thank you for allowing people to come to, on the discovery tour to your site.
Yeah, thanks.
Has more than 30 years of experience in his career and it's been focused on the control of foodborne pathogens in the manufacturing plant environment, rapid methods for identification and genetic characterization of foodborne pathogens, and continuous improvement of food safety systems such as hazard analysis and critical control point. He's also a lead instructor for the preventive controls for human foods under the Food Safety Preventive Alliance. Then I say, welcome to the stage. Thank you, thank you.
We can go down and start.
Okay. All right. So, I'll shift gears and start asking some questions because people want to know. So, I'll start with you, Melanie. You know, I went over a little bit of data just in regards to the food supply. Is it getting safer? What's your perspective on some of the data that I shared around recalls for listeria, outbreaks? And what do you think the consumer impact is and the impact of social media?
I would say objection, compound question. I'm a lawyer, guilty. No, there's a, there's a lot there to unpack. I think when you asked me the question, you know, do you, what do you think relative safety is with respect to our food supply now? And your data tells an accurate story. Recalls have stagnated. We seem to be bending the curve a bit on outbreaks. But I asked the question, what's safe? Does safe mean the same thing to me as it does to you? Does safe mean the same thing in the United States as it does in the EU or in Asia Pac and other parts of the world? We all have different definitions. In the US, for example, the only place safe is actually legally defined and codified legislation, not to bore you with legalese, has to do with chemicals, not pathogens. We often conflate safety with adulteration in the US and have that conversation. So, it really is almost a bigger challenge of what constitutes safety. Now, if you look objectively at the data we do have, I would agree personally, I think it is a more safe food supply. I asked the question, what are we using as a metric? Are recalls an indication of safety? Is more outbreak identification an indication that we are in a less safe food supply? I'd argue, maybe we're more safe because we're looking and we're finding. We're doing some, we have the ability to do something about it. And so, it's really about, to me, what's the measure? What's the metrics? Maybe our food supply is not changing and the safety of it isn't changing at all. Maybe our consumer demographic is. Has anyone seen the themes in the last few listerio mono recalls around the globe? And it is targeting vulnerable subpopulations like the elderly and like infants. If you go back and you look at our demographic data, baby boomers are aging up, right? We're getting more people in that more vulnerable subpopulation category. We have more births, thank you COVID-19, right? When everyone was bored and locked up. But so, I think, I mean, I say that tongue in cheek, but what my point really is, is we have to always reevaluate, who's our consumer? Not just our intended consumer, but who's that unexpected but kind of reasonably foreseeable consumer? And what is that intended use? Did Blue Bell ever think their ice cream was going to purposely be put out on shelves to thaw to give to dysphagic patients in nursing homes? Probably not until it happened, right?
Right.
So, thinking through those kinds of things, but I would argue that we need to set our own measures internally as our own companies and then share what is really working by way of what is our own metrics? We need more data to do that. And without that, we're guessing quite a bit.
Any comments you want to add to that at all?
Um, no, I just maybe add a little bit, you know, again, I do think in general, things are getting safer, but there's still a lot we can do.
Amen.
When you look at the aging population, the more susceptible population, you know, it is true, a lot of times, you know, we envision where a food product is gonna go, who's gonna consume that food product. We don't always know what the market's gonna do when that product actually gets out there. You know, it's, I like to tell a lot of stories. And you know, one of the stories I tell was, you know, many, many years ago, worked for a company, we manufactured a product that was called Shake and Bake. You know, in Shake and Bake, the intent is it's breadcrumbs and seasoning. You shake it in a bag with some raw chicken and you bake it in the oven. So, one of the things we started to find out from our consumer feedback lines was not complaints, not bad things. You know, they were telling us, you know, that seasoning packet is fantastic. We love to put it on popcorn, you know, we like to do it with this and that. You know, and for some reason, I'll pick on, because my boss there is, he's Canadian in some respects. It was the Canadians that told us that the most. I don't know what they were doing up there, but you know, they started using the seasoning packet that was intended to go on a raw poultry product, was intended to get a thorough cook, a thorough bake, and it was being used as a ready to eat product. So, we had to take that information, even though it was not complaints, it was actually compliments. We had to think about it. We had, did we design these products right for that usage? We hadn't. And so, we needed to go back to the drawing board a little bit and look at how we could redesign that product because it didn't matter how we sold it or what we sold it for, the consumer was gonna do something different. And I, you know, I think that's something we have to consider more and more today. People use things differently. You know, we, we maybe don't think about the elderly when we think about ice cream, but at the same time, if you think about why it may be going to those populations, it makes a lot of sense, so we should be considering that more. So, you know, I do think there's more that we can do and I do think sometimes we have to listen to what we're being told by the consumer and maybe reconsider the purpose or the design of our products.
And if I might, I know you also had asked, what's the impact to the consumer and what's the role social media plays? I mean, I see the same headlines you see and that, you know, your CEO sees, right? And consumers see. I mean, a recent Pew study says that one in four people still read any sort of news source, whether it's a newspaper or watch the news, and they spend an average of 89 seconds. So, if you're an editor of a newspaper or a CEO of a newspaper, you're gonna want those soundbites and those headlines to be as catchy, sensational, and may I say sexy as possible to hook your reader, right? So, that's where consumers learn and digest data in those screenshots we saw on your very first slide. And we as a food industry have to understand what we do every day has to counteract those 90 seconds, right? Because we could lose millions due to a 90 second soundbite or a headline, a headline in a newspaper that consumers take as the full story. And we know, we know context is king. Where you find blood on the floor or rust or mold matters, right? But we, I think we have to as a, as an industry, be willing to do the right thing within our four walls, really pressure test our systems so that we've got a good story to tell in response to the 90 second story that gets told in social media and the dying print sources.
Got you, got you. No, excellent. So, love that. I think, let's peel the onion back a little bit, right? So, we see the issues, we believe we're getting better, but we're still having problems, right? So, what's missing? Like what are, where, when you think about like in the operations or you look at the whole process, what, what are we missing, Joe?
So, you know, I think sometimes it's lapses, you know, and sometimes it's short term memory. You know, people always say, if you want to, you know, get more investment in food safety, you know, you have a good outbreak. Well, that's really a crappy way to do it and to go about it. You know, a lot of the things we know about how to control listeria or environmental pathogens, you know, we've known for quite a while and sometimes it's just re-engagement, sometimes it's rediscovery of some of that. You know, we back in the, you know, I always tell people, I'm a, you know, meathead by birth and by breeding. You know, I started in the meat industry, started with Oscar Mayer and, you know, we've been chasing listeria since the late 80s, early 90s. And, you know, way back when, we had what we called a listeria control equation. And so, the listeria control equation was five factors. You know, it was clean, dry, uncracked floors. So, really, the right infrastructure, good infrastructure, good sound building. It was employee GMP practices. It was traffic patterns. So, how do materials and people move throughout the facility? And then it was employee GMP practices. Or, did I already say that one?
Yeah.
I did say that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, hygienic design of equipment and then sanitation practices. So, you know, again, if, if the equipment's not designed so it can be clean, you know, you'll fail. If sanitation practices aren't good and aren't right, you will potentially fail. So, you had those five factors. Three of those five factors rely on people, rely on their understanding of the role that they play, rely on their understanding of how they can impact something like movement of listeria throughout the facility. So, it's really investing in giving your people the knowledge and the tools to understand the role that they play is very important. We were talking a little bit earlier about sanitation and sanitation people typically, you know, kind of on the lower end of pay in a plant, typically, you know, work the, not the greatest hours. You know, they're, they're your most important resource and your most important asset quite often. You know, if they don't get it right, you're starting off in a very bad place. So, making sure people understand.
Makes sense. Melanie, for you, so similar to me, I get the opportunity to see, you know, when we say farm to fork, I get to see what's happening on farms from an animal health perspective, what's happening in the food manufacturing and, you know, restaurants and retail and all down the line. When you, and you get to see like how each of those segments kind of address the different concerns that they have. For you, being in the position you're in, what are some of the common themes regarding listeria recalls do you see? Like just from a, you know, we talked a little bit about root cause or like validation. What are just some of the themes of looking at, you know, you get to see like deeply behind the scenes if you're dealing with clients? What's, what are you seeing in terms of themes?
So, I am a professional skeptic because I'm a lawyer, disclaimer, right? But I see a theme of lack of curiosity and lack of questions. Maybe said another way, overreliance on third parties to come and we're, we're trying to risk transfer as much as humanly possible around food safety and even listeria control, right? So, with that, you know, looking to your chemicals provider, not throwing anybody under a bus.
Yeah, don't throw anybody under the bus.
But let's, let's ask the questions about, does that, you know, how, how did you perform your validation, right? What, did you start with clean? Was it a flat, easy to clean, smooth, one by one piece of metal in a Petri dish? Or did you actually do it on my equipment? With my product matrix? Maybe, maybe you did a sanitation validation and we know what titration and what dwell time and so forth to use, but it was on a totally different product matrix? It was in a totally different type of equipment configuration? Was it assuming it was hygienically designed and mine's not because I repurposed mine from 1955 as a, you know, from something it was not intended to be built for? These are the kinds of, it's almost taking a five why kind of approach to digging into asking more questions around your validation strategy or the ones you can rely on by third parties. And you absolutely can. You can by law, you can by good risk management practices. But be informed and understand, is this really apples to apples? Is this apples to orangutans, right?
Right.
It can be, it can be an entirely different story. And so, I think the, I go in and do a lot of recall and crisis response work and just the light bulbs I see going off over people's heads going, I had no idea, like I had no idea to ask that question. I had no idea that that validation really didn't get at my intended use on my equipment with my product portfolio, right? With my sanitation break schedule.
Right.
So, it's all those things in totality that I think we assign different people in our organizations, different tasks, and we're losing the forest for the trees sometimes to understand, hey, the people who do our preventive maintenance work, you know, also really need to weigh in on our sampling strategy and our frequency and our cleaning and sanitation. So, those are some of the themes I see with regards to having to come in on the response side of things and work our way backwards. That and just very rudimentary root cause analysis where we stop at the first why and don't ask the other four. Maybe don't leverage things like fish bone, maybe don't really peel back the onion to try to blow up your first hypothesis of what went wrong. And that's probably one of the biggest messages if you hear anything I say today. Try to blow up your first hypothesis. Because chances are, it might not be the cause.
Yeah. I, you know, I think back, you know, in my first QA manager roles of really understanding those tools to be able to help solve problems, right? And I think learning what real root, true root cause analysis is, is really important because I think sometimes you, you think you know the answer and you make your data match what you think it is, right? Versus, let's go through the tools and the work to really sort that out and then you look at your hypothesis and to your point, looking at, does this really solve the problem that we actually have? And then, you know, the other thing I will just say is that being someone who did have to lead an organization through an unfortunate listeria recall, understanding the, you know, what your environmental monitoring program need to have, right? Looking at what do you have all the right organisms that you're, do you understand your process well enough to know that these are the indicator organisms or pathogens that you need to be looking at for your environment? Speaking of that, so Joe, thinking through like, how, how do you get a well-designed corporate program, micro program sustainably implemented at the operator and plant level? Like, how do you engage your frontline sanitation teams?
So, like, you know, I think Melanie kind of alluded to some of it too. It's, it's getting people to appreciate the fact that they, they own it, they're accountable. It's their facility. What leaves their facility is their responsibility. You know, they're accountable for the safety of it. One of the tools that we have just kind of for engaging the line workers and other people is we have a process we call Golden Six. And it's something that, you know, we use to encourage the, the plant management folks, the line supervisors to get out on the floor, be visible on the floor, work with the line employees and line workers. And they're looking for six things, you know, they're looking for, you know, is, is the water kind of being controlled well? You know, looking for pest control, things going well there. Just employee GMPs, how are we doing? What's the structure overhead of our conveyors and things? What's the infrastructure look like? Sanitation, housekeeping, and just general condition of the building. You know, like I say, the floors and things. And, you know, we're encouraging the plant management and the management team to get out there and be seen on the floor and talk to employees, you know, the line workers on the floor and have an honest conversation. What do we see about these things? Are we satisfied with what we see for, for housekeeping? Is there something we think we could do better? Is there something that we could be providing to the line workers that could help them do that better? You know, and so, we have the Golden Six. And again, we didn't invent it, you know, we, we stole it from, you know, somebody else along the way. But, you know, you've heard probably a few times today, food safety is not a competitive advantage, you know, beg, borrow, and steal. Quite honestly, I have, I have probably 100 of these cards if anybody wants one. Ask me later. But, you know, it's getting them engaged, getting them involved, getting them to feel like they have a voice, the line workers have a voice. You know, remembering to talk to the maintenance guys, remembering to talk to the sanitation guys who aren't there during production and where they seem to have difficulties with cleaning. You know, what tools do they not have that they could have? So, really listening to them. You gotta be careful because if you go and ask the question and they start to tell you some things, you better have a way to track and demonstrate that you're taking that to heart and making those improvements. But, you know, it's, it's getting them out on the floor, getting management engaged with the online workers, the floor workers, and having those conversations is, you know, the best place to start.
Got you. If I could actually layer onto that, Lisa. Sorry about that.
Layer on.
I love what you just said, and those factors are mission critical. And I think then you take it to, how are they monitored? What are the metrics you put in place? And what are the KPIs associated with those expectations? And be really careful and again, pressure test. Could some of those KPIs or those measurements or what are you gonna do about it, right? Come back to bite you? Is there some unintended conflict? Is there some unintended consequence? Might they start looking less? Might they start not swabbing in that spot? Depending upon how, is it policing or is it celebrating, right? I want you to find, I want you to seek and destroy. I want you to remember the origin of seek and destroy, which is destroy the harborage point, not necessarily the bacteria, right? I think we've lost some of our way when it comes to, metrics are important. We need the data to make good decisions, right? But we always have to ask ourselves, are we shooting ourselves in the foot? Is there an unintended consequence here, right? And I think we really need to get back to and honor that very true origin of seek and destroy, which is understand where it can live, where it can harbor, and destroy that. Because if you destroy that, the chances of it coming back are lower than trying to zap it with a chemical you don't even know gets in that L joint or, you know, in that gasket connection. We've got to know those things and be able to have that confidence level in all the metrics that we create and have at least a good probability that it's going to drive positive behavior and positive change versus creating some sort of an unintended net consequence to what we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, it's, you know, the KPIs, the targets, the measures are always a source of argument, you know, especially when you're talking about listeria control. Is the goal zero, you know, plants want to get to zero? No findings, you know, and that's always a concern because are we really looking hard enough? And so again, when you talk about senior management in the company, having them understand that zero is not necessarily a good thing, continuing to drive numbers down is a good thing. But, you know, we had Edmund Scanlon, our CEO, was in one of our facilities and they were sharing their environmental data with him and things, and, you know, they said, we've, you know, been two years without a positive. And he said, now wait a minute. Are you sure you're looking hard enough?
Yeah.
Because everybody tells me with listeria, you should find it from time to time. So, you know, getting that message from the top down that even though we want to have, you know, very little findings, it's more important to find it so that we can fix it so that it doesn't become a food safety issue than it is to have zero.
Right, right. I remember back in the day when I would, in a couple of our facilities, I would go to pre-op and my team would say, we cleaned everything, we are good. And I would say, give me three swaps. I will go out in this facility and I will find, just give me three. I don't need, and usually one would be something that would pop and they, and I would tell them, I said, if I don't find anything, I'll buy the whole plant lunch. And then I would say, if I do find something, I'm going to still buy the whole plant lunch, right? So it wasn't a penal or a, you know, a penalty, it was, let's, I need you to be, you know, very cognizant and to seek and destroy and kind of find it. I know that the legalities of that sometimes drives people from not doing that, but I think, you know, the issue is here and we need to continue with that, you know, look at the basics. Joe, question for you. I know we talked earlier about validating your sanitation program and what that should look like. Can you give us an example of how you or your team or company actually validates your sanitation program?
You know, the ultimate steps kind of are, you know, going through the process, doing your cleaning, doing your swabbing, taking some of the equipment apart, making sure you really got to everything that you intended to. But, you know, the first step always is, before I can validate my cleaning process, I got to see what the current process really says and how closely am I following that current process? Looking at, you know, again, challenging that current process, challenging the level of equipment disassembly, and making sure that you're really going to put the right foot forward or the best foot forward. So sometimes, you know, part of the validation is recognizing upfront that, you know, there's things we could improve first. But then once that's done, you know, it's really going through the process, truly following the process, taking the right swaps, you know, again, challenging yourself to find the worst places you possibly can. You know, you don't swab the stuff that's right in front of you and easy, you swab the stuff where maybe you've got to get the ladder, where maybe you've got to get, you know, a maintenance person to help you take something apart. But it's really digging in and it's really proving to yourself. And once you've done that, sometimes it's a good idea to have somebody else come in and challenge you, take their three swaps and see what have I missed to truly, you know, truly feel more confident that you've done a good job with your validation.
Good, excellent. Shifting gears a little bit, we talked earlier about the, you know, assessing the risk or thinking about the aging population, right? And you mentioned, you know, just different products and how we look at that. You know, and consumers may use products differently than you had intentionally planned for them to be used. How does that play into assessing your food safety risk? Either one, or what are you thinking?
Well, I mean, I guess my personal philosophy is design your food safety quality management systems to your most vulnerable foreseeable consumer, reasonably foreseeable consumer. Sometimes, you know, I mean, we've seen this before, Nestle Toll House cookie had, you know, an issue because depressed teenagers were coming home from high school and eating raw cookie dough right out of the damn thing without baking the cookies, right? So now they did something about it. So I think one message I can say is, once you know, once those Canadians call up and say Shake &amp; Bake's brilliant on popcorn, right? Post-kill step. With the great words of Spider-Man, with great knowledge comes great responsibility. You have to do something about it. So I think reassessing your hazard analysis and your food safety program, having that be a trigger, hey, once you learn, whether it's a complaint or a praise, that consumers are using your product in a different way as you designed and intended, go back and reevaluate. Maybe you don't need to make a change. But as an attorney, and that was fair game, by the way, because I kind of almost threw chemical companies under the bus, so back at me.
Back at you.
I get it, I had it coming. As a lawyer, I would say if you do that and you have some level of documentation accordingly and then something bad happens, you've got that better story to tell to counteract that 90 second soundbite you're going to end up in.
Got you. What about you?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'd just echo that again, you know, you don't just look at customer complaints, look at sometimes customer praise, you know, look at, again, what's out there in the social media that might show people using products differently. I always laugh about the cookie dough because you know that that's something that people do, you know? And then, as soon as we get through that process, you see other companies out there advertising raw cookie dough ice cream cones. Now, in fine print, they say they use, you know, heat-treated flour or something like that, but it's like, don't encourage, you know, bad practices. But yeah, it's paying attention to what's out there. You know, again, paying attention to what else is happening out there in those headlines, you know, always challenging yourself to say, hmm, somebody makes a product similar to mine, they just had an issue. Should I really go back and look at my product design again and did I think of all the right hazards? Why, what, why did they have an issue? Why haven't I had an issue? You know, playing devil's advocate, challenging, always challenging the system. You know, you may not change a thing, but just being willing to go back and truly challenge and question, you know, is always important.
Yeah, okay. All right. So kind of finishing up here, you know, we stated that this was a call to action, right? It was, you know, as you both look at the industry, what can we, what can we all do, be doing differently? And think about all the stakeholders, right? So, you know, we think about, we're here at GFSI, there's multiple stakeholders here, you talk about industry, retail, you know, service providers. What, I start with you, Melanie, what can the stakeholders be doing differently to enhance the, or to strengthen consumer trust, but also reduce, you know, the listeria or any pathogenic issue that companies need to address?
I think no matter where you are in that stakeholder chain, whether you're a supplier, whether you're a CPO, whether you're a manufacturer, et cetera, it's pressure test your assumptions and your programs. Really put them through their paces. Want to find the chinks in that armor, if that makes sense, right? Want to find those vulnerabilities and fix it in a time of calm instead of a time of crisis. Bring in third-party experts, don't be too proud, right? Don't, and have some tough conversations with folks like me. I know that lawyers can be a pain in the, starts with an A, ends with a couple dollar sign symbols, right? And they're very risk averse. And get, now, that's how they're incented, by the way, going back to you get what you incent. So look at your incentives, look at your KPIs and your metrics, make sure they're not backfiring, and that we're working together across stakeholder communities to try to achieve the ultimate goal, which everyone ultimately has, which is increasing public health and safety, decreasing incidence of listeria mono and any other microbiological, chemical, or physical hazard, right? But I think until we stop saying, we've never had the problem, they were the one in the headline, right? You know, haven't had an issue, I always end that sentence for them with the word yet or that you know of. It's either because you're not looking hard enough, right? Going back to look hard and reward that.
Right.
Right? And that's everyone. That could be an auditor coming in and looking hard and rewarding that, right? That can be your own internal audit program. And I think lastly, a lot of people ask me, you know, in my role as a U.S. food law attorney and regulatory compliance, food safety specialist, you know, what's going to happen with the current administration and what do I need to do differently, right? And it's something we should be doing all along, which is be the hardest advocate, be your own worst critic. Like, increase your own internal audits, design your food safety management system to your highest risk and probably your most pain in the you-know-what customer requirements, right? Because right now, that's probably going to be your regulator, for lack of a better word, or the enforcer, right? But let's create the need for our own data. Let's define our own measuring stick and our own metrics. Let's hold ourselves accountable to them. Let's put consequences in place if they're not achieved. And then let's share what's working. Because going back to your point and what we all preach is, food safety is not a trade secret, let's actually not just turn that into a soundbite too.
Thank you. Joe, how would you, what do we need to do?
To build on a couple of those things, you know, again, continue to challenge your own systems, continue to ask why, you know, why did they have a problem and I haven't had a problem? Playing that devil's advocate. You know, really working with the folks on the floor and really making sure that everybody truly is engaged and everybody truly feels ownership and accountability for the safety of the product going out the door. It's easy sometimes to forget that you're making food. You know, for us even, we don't, a lot of times, make the finished product that the consumer sees, but we make a lot of things that are going directly into that and many times without a kill step. You know, it's making it personal for people, making sure they understand that. For God's sake, don't relearn the same lesson over and over again. You know, go back to the previous outbreaks, go back to the previous recalls, understand what the learnings were, making sure you're implementing those learnings. You know, don't keep reinventing the wheel. There's a lot of resources out there, make sure you're using them. The one other piece I'll just throw in is around data. You know, and not just pathogen environmental monitoring data, but other indicator organism data, other things like ATP. A lot of times, we don't pay any attention to the data until it exceeds a threshold. Most of the interesting activity is going on below that threshold. What's going on with that data? Is it going up? Is it going down? What's my trend looking like? And not just last week. What's happened over the last year? Sometimes I'm going along and things are looking good and all of a sudden, you know, I see a 10 or I see a 20. Okay, well, and I don't see anything for another month. All of a sudden, now I see a 30, a 40. Well, it's not exceeded my threshold, so I kind of ignore it. Don't ignore it. Something's changed. Find out what's changed and fix it.
Perfect. And I would, I would just add, you know, you talked about, you know, using outside resources to help support your work, right? So yes, there's legal resources, but there's also a lot of technical resources, even within your service providers, right? So, you know, there's support that even we help to offer. So then, and then I would also say that there's other guidance, like around, you know, we talked about information from regulatory bodies, like what guidance that we get from, like whether it's CFIA or from the FDA or even guidance just around environmental monitoring programs and, you know, documents and white papers that have been written for that particular purpose to really help support the work that, you know, industry is doing. And I think the last thing I would say is that, and we mentioned this before or in previous conversation, is that, you know, the, how did you say it, Melanie? It was, the manufacturer's risk is the retailer's risk, right? So whatever's happening at one side is happening at the other. So, thank you very much. Please give a round of applause to our panelists.